This conference will now be recorded.
We'll start with our roll call. Phyllis Bowman.
Sorry, it wasn't trying, it wasn't turning on for me. Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst.
Here.
Counselor Salinas Oliveras.
Here.
Eric Kuntz.
And I am here this evening. The flag salute. If you could lead us, please, Counselor McKeel in the flag salute.
I remember to turn my sound on this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the minutes of the council meeting of October 5th in our consent calendar. There was a proposed change.
I actually have three minor changes I would like to make in the section where we were talking about proposals for changing the way people are appointed. The first thing, while I am enthusiastic about having one non-resident of Monmouth member of a board and commission, it's the more than one that I was not so wild about, and I just wanted the minutes to reflect that I don't have a problem with with a single member on each board and commission if that's what we wind up with. Secondly, and it's sort of a parsing thing, the end of that same paragraph, if you read it a certain way, makes it sound like I want the power of appointment. Me now want the power of appointment. No, I don't. So Phyllis and I talked through those and she generated some proposed changes. And then the last one was where I was reporting on ODOT's visit along Highway 99. And the big takeaway from that was that they walked, we walked the whole length of 99 through Monmouth, all the way down to Gwynne Street. And they're going to generate some proposed solutions for some of our problem intersections. And the nice thing there is that ODOT will design these solutions. ODOT will vet them. ODOT will say, yeah, this will be fine with us if you can come up with money to build it. And then that's where it comes to us to come up with the money. But it's nice to have pre-vetted designs. And this is going to be important for us going forward. So that's, that was the big take home. I wanted to be sure it was reflected there. So I don't think I've, they ever said anything about minutes, but this one I had three that I would like to modify.
All right. Were there any other additions or corrections to the minutes noted? Being none, I would entertain a motion to adopt one version or another of the minutes of the council meeting of October 5th.
I'll move to accept the minutes of the council meeting with John's changes.
I'll second.
Thank you very much for that. Moved and seconded to ex-approve the improved minutes of a council meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? I don't see any. So thank you very much, John, for that thorough change. And Phyllis, thank you for getting those out today so everybody could take a look. We do have time for public comments and those would be entertained for items not related to the hearings we have this evening. There is no one in the room to provide public comment. Phyllis, did we get anyone online who would be interested in speaking to us?
Not during this time. There is one person on our meeting who wants to speak during the first public hearing.
Perfect. We will remember to include those comments in the public hearing. Thank you. All right. Our first item this evening was to visit with the Parks and Rec Board. And I see our staff liaison there. So and don't see any members of the Parks and Rec Board, but Russ, do you have that report for us this evening?
Oh, but hi, Cece. It is I, Sabra Jewell, and I
Oh, there's Sabra.
the report for the Parks and Rec Board this evening. How are y'all doing tonight? Much appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you guys, albeit by Zoom. My name is Sabra Jewell. I am the newest member to the Parks and Rec Board, but I am accompanied by our chairperson, Mark Vadel, Diane Allstrom, Margaret Johnson, Odie Campbells, and Public Works Director Russell Cooper is our staff liaison. And we have the pleasure of working with John Oberst as our, as our council representative. We have had a busy year despite COVID and all the challenges that that has brought us. We were able to use unused grant money from last year to refurbish a bike rack that was on Main Street and now is in Cherry Lane Park. We updated and reviewed our grant application ahead of our grants that we sent out. We were able to review nine and awarded five grants this year. Of those, we awarded an outdoor fitness camp through the YMCA. They hosted 12 weekly classes, yoga, it was boot camp, all sorts of things, and it was very well attended. There was also an Outdoor Explorers three-day camp through the 4H, which while they had limited capacity, they were only able to host 30 young people. They were excited to be able to have those kids together doing camp activities, and they look forward to doing that again next year. And that was a STEM-related camp. Also, there was movie in the park, which was very well attended. We heard a lot of great feedback from, from that event as well. Now, what we do know is that there are some, some challenges that were presented. It's 10:00 PM before it gets dark enough to show a movie, so that was one of the challenges. And also, there needs to be better coordination with local businesses. There was some competing entertainment that night, and I think those problems could be easily solved moving forward. The skate sports camp was postponed until spring, and our returning grant awardee was the Oregon Shakeout Cycling Event. One thing I think that we're going to consider for applicants moving forward is making them aware of insurance requirements, because that created an extra cost factor. So that's something that we are aware of now. We can, we can make clear to those recipients, so they can build it into their budget. That we participated in the skate park design, and so we were getting regular updates on that. We worked through the prioritization of the policy of giving the central youth sports of the ball fields that are located in Monmouth Park Recreation Park. Now, we did not get to have our potluck with the tree board, but I'm sure, looking forward to the future, we'll be able to gather with that group again. And also, we did our large park tours. We were, we were able to accomplish several of those towards the end of this year. We went to Main Street Park, Madrona, Gentle Woods in Monmouth. Just made notes, looked for little small things we could fix, dreamed big about maybe some future improvements we could make. And then, of course, we looked over the master plan of the Monmouth Recreation Park, and so we're excited about all of that. I welcome any questions. Hopefully, I can answer them. If not, I'm glad Russ Cooper is here at my stead.
Thank you so much, Sabra, for representing your excellent committee. Counselor Belts has a question.
Yeah, Sabra, I'm wondering, are there things that you might need from council? I realize Counselor Oberst is your representative, but are there any things you might, you might think you're going to be bringing before us in the next year? Things we can help with?
I'll let Russ take that if there is a better answer to this question. But what I do know is that as a newer member, I do feel very supported already just from the representation and the leadership that we have. And the people on the board have been seasoned veterans, so I do not feel like we are walking alone in this. Russ, do you have anything to add?
You know, I would agree. I think that the park system is well taken care of. One of the things that we may look at, there's actually two things, but one would be the total amount of the grant dollars that we budget. We may look at increasing that a little bit to cover. You know, if there's an event that has a higher-than-normal insurance cost, we may, we may look at being able to provide a little extra money for higher insurance. But with regard to the Park and Rec Board, I think they are doing a great job.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And good, good presentation, Sabra. Thank you.
Counselor McKeel, and then Counselor Lopez.
Yeah, Sabra, thank you so much for your report. It actually clued me in on something I probably was errant to give you a heads up. Several months ago, I got an email from somebody asking about the pickleball courts. And I know that that is in the master plan for like five years off or something. But she was like, oh, why five years off? So just thought I should have probably put that on your radar as well. And I apologize for not forwarding that email to you to let you know as you are looking at where you might have. You said you had some extra money left over. It's like, oh, maybe that could have helped the pickleball court. So anyway, my apologies for not letting you know.
Quite enough. And Counselor Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you so much, Sabra, for, for coming and delivering this report. It's always wonderful to hear from our boards and commissions, and especially one that's, you know, as beloved as the, as the Parks Board. And I actually have two questions for you, and they're, they're kind of in, in different directions to an extent. You know, in the past, we've received as councils some feedback from residents about interest in more accessible, more ADA-accessible parks and more ADA equipment geared toward kids in our parks. Is this anything that the Parks and Rec Board has held on their radar or been talking about or considering?
Russ, I think I might let you field that one, just because you've been in some more deeper meetings than I have certainly on this topic. Would you mind?
No, that's not a problem. Sabra is doing a great job. She, she's our newest member, so you guys are, you guys are hitting her with some good ones here.
I like it. Keep it up.
So the master plan, some of the things that are, that are working, that we're doing through the master plan is that annually we're setting aside $10,000 to go toward accessible features into the parks this year. I think in my, in my, one of my notes to council, Mar Park and South Gate Park have some new pathways that were constructed into them, into a, both a picnic table area as well as into the play area. So if you haven't been by either of those two parks, swing by, take a look at that. We'll, we'll be doing that for the next, I think it's about the next five years, we'll have dollars that are going towards primarily paths, but maybe we'll, we'll spend some dollars on some particular picnic tables or benches or bench areas that are conducive to folks with disabilities. So that is going on. And then as the group looks at Monmouth Recreation Park and the master plan improvements there, the playground at that park, which is kind of the, one of the first that we'll be looking at, it does call for surfacing that is much more accessible and toys that will be. So that's coming in the next year as far as a, you know, it, it improves accessibility. But in Monmouth Recreation Park, we'll be constructing walking paths around the dog park and the tennis court in that park that will allow for folks to get out and better use that park and move around that park.
Fantastic. Thank you. Exciting to, to get a view into some of the more detailed pieces of what's in the works. My, my next question relating, relating to parks has to do with, has to do with the, the houseless community and the crisis that as a society we're kind of dealing with. I think it's often less evident in our little town of Monmouth. But from things that I've heard from, from residents, we, and from things that I've experienced myself, we, we do unfortunately have some, you know, individuals in our own community, in our own backyard that, that are experiencing houselessness. Oftentimes, this, you know, will be most evident in public spaces such as, you know, the stoops of buildings a number of years ago. A couple of years ago, we were talking a lot about someone that was at the, at the library, and I think there've been a couple of people over there in the past couple of years. But we've also heard little bits and pieces involving the parks. Is this anything that is in the, you know, in the, the Parks Board's, you know, radar? And if so, I'd love to hear what, what the conversations around that have been. I know there's no good answers, and I'm not looking for answers, but just kind of looking for an update from, from, from residents on the Parks Board.
Russ, and I can't recall any conversation around that at any meetings that I've attended. And the, and I've only been with them for, you know, since March, and I cannot recall that coming up at all. Sir, Russ, can you add to that at all?
No, that's correct. It's a topic that the Parks Board hasn't taken up or had, I'll say, assigned or appointed to them. As far as the, the park system, you know, being able to provide some assistance, we have been able to, we've got Madrona Park now that is the bathroom facilities are open year-round as well as Main Street Park. So I know that those facilities, especially Main Street, have been used in, in recent years. And so I think being able to offer those facilities at, you know, that are open is a real benefit to folks that need that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And once again, thank you for, for all the work and thanks to the, the Parks Board for all the work that you do. There really are parks and engagement in our parks is a huge asset to the community and one of the things that makes us such a special place to be.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other question, questions or comments, thank you, Sabra. I'll echo everyone else saying that and for that great report, and we will see you again next time. All right. At this time, we will hold a public hearing on a potential change to our comprehensive plan map and zone change. And everybody looks ready? So I now open the public hearing on comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change. File number C P M A Z C 21 dash 01. My name is Cecilia Kuntz. I am the mayor and the chairperson for this hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with Monmouth City Code and state law, ORS 197.763. Specifically, the staff will first present the staff report and recommendation. The applicant will then have an opportunity to present the proposal and address any issues raised by the staff report and recommendation. For public testimony, I will first ask to hear from people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I will then ask to hear from people who have neutral comments or questions about the proposal. They are neither for nor against. Finally, those in opposition to the proposal will have an opportunity to present testimony. City staff may then present additional material and recommendations based on the public testimony. The applicant will be given the opportunity to have the last word. After each presentation, I will ask for questions from the council. So if we, again, we are recording this hearing. So when we have testimony, we'll ask that people state their name and address when called to speak, which will help in preparing accurate written minutes of the hearing and assist with mailing copies of the decision to all interested parties. If anyone had written testimony to submit in addition to that, who's with us here tonight, they can give that staff to be entered in the record. We will ask each speaker to limit themselves to more than, no more than three to five minutes, and presentations will be timed and will be informed when allotted time has expired. And, and at that point, I would ask for the speaker to conclude his or her remarks. But a copy of, a written copy of the statement may be emailed to staff and entered into the record. And if there are multiple speakers, which there don't seem to be, we would have another process. All right. First of all, before we start the staff report, we are required to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts. And Lane, would you remind folks of what that consists of and what their obligations are?
Sure. Conflict of interest comes in either, one of two flavors. One, a potential conflict of interest, in which case a vote on a matter before the council could in order to a council member's financial benefit or the avoidance of a financial detriment. A potential conflict of interest must be disclosed, and once disclosed, the counselor can participate fully in the hearing and deliberation and vote. The other kind of conflict of interest is a, and is an actual conflict of interest. That is where a vote on a matter, the proposed action would inure to the benefit, the financial benefit of the counselor or the avoidance of a detriment. And in the case of an actual conflict of interest, the conflict must be disclosed, and that counselor then cannot participate any further in the, in the proceedings. I should mention that this rule about conflict applies not only to council members, but also to members of their family. As for site views, the council is instructed that if you have passed this property, you've inspected, if you've walked on it, if you've done your own investigation, you need to report that. As for ex parte communications, that would be if you had received communications regarding this application for or against by persons outside of the record of the proceeding. Then you're required to disclose those, those ex parte contacts so that they can be addressed by the witnesses in the hearing. And the last thing I guess I would mention is a matter of bias. If you have been on record already for or against a particular application, so that you are not able to be objective in applying the criteria to the decision, to the application, then you must declare a bias and may not participate in the decision.
Thank you very much. With that, do any counselors wish to make any disclosures regarding conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias? Carol McKeel?
I had ex parte contact. I had a resident of Monmouth state her concern about the extra traffic that might be caused from that property being developed.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carey?
I live in the area, and I go to Gentle Woods Park often, and I look across the fence. So that would fall into Lane's caution about viewing the property. I've had a person in our neighborhood making door-to-door rounds, speaking generally against all development in that area. But not for the last probably two months.
Thank you. Any others? Counselor Lopez?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of full disclosure and the wonderful, the wonderful way that our other counselors have, you know, I too am familiar with this part of town and have, have gone over and, and, you know, looked at where, you know, the, the areas that this has, you know, has to deal with. I don't recall having spoken with anyone directly about it, but it's not without, without the possibility and, you know, the, the time that we've, you know, been looking at these things for a while. So I don't believe I've had actual contact, but there is a potential for it.
Right. Thank you. Any other general or specific?
I don't think any of those are disqualifying. They've been disclosed and put on the record.
All right. Thank you very much. State law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of this hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the written staff report and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report. Second, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or city code that speakers believe apply to this application under ORS 197.763.5B as in boy. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on that issue. That is as per ORS 197.763.5C. Finally, to the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficiently specificity to allow the city to respond to an issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court under ORS 197.796.3B as in boy. With those admonishments, I will ask Suzanne Duffner, our Community Development Director, to present the oral staff report. The written staff report is in the docket.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Suzanne Duffner. I'm Community and Economic Development Staff for the City of Monmouth, here to present the staff report tonight for comprehensive plan zone change 2101. And I do have a few slides to share with you, and hopefully, is my sound okay? Just wanted to check in since, make sure folks can hear me okay. Okay, good. See if I can figure out how to start this now. Slide show from beginning. Okay. So the applicant in this particular case is Randy Myers. The property owner is the Ward Family Trust. The request is to rezone approximately 8.6 acres from a public service designation to low-density residential. And that does include a corresponding change to the comprehensive plan map to that same designation. The property is located in the 800 block of Craven Street North, just east of Pacific Highway 99W. And you'll know this property probably more readily just north of Gentle Woods Park, and I do have a map here to show that as well. The current zoning is public service. The property is inside the city limits. And again, it's 8.6 acres. That is the portion of the property that's being considered for rezone. It's actually part of a larger tax lots, but only the 8.6 acres is proposed for changing. And this type of land use application is what we call a type III application, meaning planning commission's roles to make a recommendation, and then the council makes the actual, the final decision that's adopted by ordinance. This is an aerial photograph that shows the subject property in a blue highlight. And so it's also known as Tax Lot 1206. And you can see a large portion of the property is in farm use. It also has the middle fork of Ash Creek that goes along the southern-eastern border of the property. We have Gentle Woods Park to the south, residential, single-family neighborhood also to the south. To the north is additional farmland property that's zoned, single, low-density, single-family. And then on the other side of 99, you have additional residential and some areas that are farmed and open space along the creek as well. By way of background information, this property was zoned public service in 2001. Kind of interesting. It was actually done by the city at that time as part of the city's comprehensive plan update. The city zoned some land to, to public service as a result of a series of The city zoned some land to, to public service as a result of a series of updates to the comprehensive plan. More recently, the property has come in for just the property to the north. Again, this is tax lot 1100. So the adjoining property that's approximately 46 acres to the north is also owned by the same property owner. That was annexed. That came before the council in 2020. And more recently, the property, the applicant has come in for a lot line adjustment. And this is to adjust the property lines to accommodate for future development on the property. So basically to adjust out a portion of the property that's covered by the conservation easement. And then the, this application was actually filed in July for the plan amendment zone change. So these applications are being done in advance of trying to get the property ready for a proposed single family subdivision development. Noted the future development review applications that will still need to come before the city and the, the planning commission, and those include the plan unit development subdivision and floodplain development approval. This is a site map of the property to show in a little bit more detail where the portion of the property that's proposed for zone change and plan map amendment approval is located. So just kind of orient folks, if I get my arrow back here. So we've got 99 along the west side of the property. And then this rectangular shaped parcel is the original tax lot 1206. And then the area that's shown in the yellow highlight is the 8.6 acres that is subject to the proposed zone change and plan amendment tonight. So that is the area that's proposed to change from public service to low density residential. The remaining portion of the parcel is covered by a conservation easement that was put on that property in 2004 by the property owner that protects that property from development. So that area is still proposed to remain in, in public service. In terms of the approval criteria that the council must use for making a decision on the application, there, there are five of them to consider. And you'll note that the findings in the staff report go into much more detail on each one of these. I'm just going to kind of give a quick high level overview of those and be available to answer questions about them. But per our codes, comprehensive plan map amendments and zone change must meet these five approval criteria in order to, to be approved. And the first criterion talks about meeting one of three standards. So there needs to be an error in the zoning, some kind of change in neighborhood conditions or a public need for the, the land designation that's being requested. So you don't have to meet all three of them, but you have to at least meet one of those. The second criterion looks at whether or not the change is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan goals and policies, the ones that apply. And this instance will relate to housing and public service use and transportation. And then the third criterion look at whether or not there are adequate public facilities, services and transportation networks. So are there adequate water, sewer, stormwater utilities available or can be made available to serve the property? Fourth criterion looks at, is it inappropriate considering the surrounding land uses and the density and pattern of development in the area? And then the fifth consider is a consideration criterion is whether or not the change is consistent with the statewide planning goals that govern the city and our comprehensive plan. There's 19 of those. Just to provide again, an overview, the findings are much, much more detailed findings. I'm sure you've noted in your, in your packets and staff reports that address each of those criterion. But the, to highlight some of those, those key findings that support the change, there has been a change in neighborhood conditions since the public zoning designation was placed on the property in 2001. When that property was originally designated public zoning, there's not a lot of unfortunately, information when we went back and did the research on that change. There's not a lot of information to document the change, other than it was stated that it was applied to protect natural resources, serve as a buffer and provide opportunities for recreation. And it's somewhat unusual to apply a public designation to a privately owned parcel. And so I'm not sure if they thought that the city might acquired or something at that time. Our own zoning code states that the intent and the purpose of that public zone is really for publicly owned parcels. So these would be like school district parcels. It could be parks or city offices. So a little, little unusual that it was placed on there. Kind of fast forward to today, 20 years later, there's been some changes and that a conservation easement has been applied to that property in 2004 that actually serves as that buffer that they had, I think, intended for when they applied the public zoning back in 2001. That buffer, that conservation easement again, does not allow development. So it does meet that intent of providing a buffer between the two areas. The conservation easement though, however, also because of it limiting the development within that area. It also limits park expansion opportunities because you can't use it for park activities and recreation with that conservation easement on it. The other change that's happened since 2001, when the zoning was placed on it, is we have a much better understanding now of the natural resources that exist and where they exist on the property. So now the city has completed a local wetland land inventory and put into place wetland protections that meet the statewide planning goals to protect those significant wetland resources. The property owner has also had a wetland delineation completed so that we know at a much finer grain which portions of the property are buildable and which ones are not. And the area on the northern portion of the property is outside of that wetland bounty and could be, could be built on, could be considered a buildable area. And as I mentioned, since 2001, the city has never acquired this property. It's never come into public ownership. We don't have any plans that I'm aware of to ever have purchased that. It's not in any of our capital improvement plans. Our parks master plan that was most recently updated actually calls for a little bit more centrally located parklands, kind of in this northwestern quadrant of the city. So but what has also changed though, since 2001 is that there's, we've updated our, our housing needs. And we've found that there were land inventory, we're actually running into a limited supply of the low density residential zoned land inside of our city limits. We have a constrained supply to be able to meet our housing needs. And as we all know that there's housing shortages in our, in our state and in our area as well. In terms of the public facilities and whether or not there's adequate facilities and services, the city did receive comment from our, our Public Works Department and Monmouth Power and Light stating that public facilities can be made available to serve the property for residential development through the development of the property. The applicant has also completed a traffic impact analysis which found there's no significant increase in traffic over the worst case scenario of development in the public service zone, which is the required standard for showing compliance with the, with the statewide transportation planning rules. The proposed zoning is consistent, the low density residential, as mentioned earlier, is consistent with zoning and uses that are found in the surrounding area, particularly to the south and, and to the west. And lastly, the proposed change is also consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, particularly for housing, land use, transportation and significant natural resources, which the city has adopted wetland protection measures and flood hazard ordinances to protect and regulate those areas. The planning commission has held a public hearing on the proposed change. That was on October 6th. And we did receive some public comments and testimony through that process. We received some comments from the Fair Housing Council who routinely comment on zone changes that involve designations involving residential land and residential zone designations. And so they had requested that the city provide some additional findings stating the number of housing units that would be possible through the zone change. And so those staff has gone in and updated our, the Golden Housing findings to include some information on the number of housing units possible. Of course, that will be determined through the actual development process. And then we also received some concerns regarding, from neighbors regarding the presence of archaeological, the potential presence of archaeological artifacts, stormwater runoff and the need for coordinating development planning with the conservation impacts and impacts on the traffic pattern within the neighborhood. Those, those issues are primarily best addressed at the subdivision phase when we have a more detailed land use plan and lots, lot planters and transportation networks are actually proposed. And then finally, we also received two letters in opposition to the requests voicing concerns about the cost of development and the public designation should be retained for public use, open space. And so those have been attached to your, to your staff reports. And a copy of the draft minutes from the planning commission meeting have also been included there for reference. In conclusion, the planning commission recommended approval of the proposed change and found that the approval criteria can be met. There is a sample motion on page seven of your council packet reports tonight. When you are ready for that, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
All right, at this time, questions about the staff findings or report or the work of the planning commission that got us here? Counselor Carey?
Just to thank you, thank you for the clear report and both written and oral. The question regarding item B, sub B, which talks about change in the neighborhood, changes in the neighborhood. I, I think the applicant tried to make the case that the sort of rezone and inclusion into the city limits of tax lot 1100 reflects a change. Can we consider changes that are yet to be enacted as we're looking at changes into the neighborhood?
Yeah, so are you referring to that the property to the north has been annexed and they're proposing their own, the subdivision?
And nothing's changed yet. It probably will, but when we're looking at this, I don't know if there's anything that's changed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, Counselor Carey. I think that the, you know, stating that the subdivision is approved as a foregone conclusion is not accurate. However, I think it is accurate to state that the property to the north has been annexed for the purposes of development and urbanization. So that does represent a change. And then staff added some additional findings in there to, to talk about some of the change in conditions with the level of information and accuracy on the natural resources from what, you know, was originally understood about the property. So that, and then I think that there's, and I didn't, sorry if I didn't emphasize this as well in my overview, but the, the public need for the low density residential inside the city limits, I think, is, is an important one as well. So it's got kind of two ways to look at it. But the error that was talked about, oh, sorry, just to finish on that criteria, made me think of one other thought. The applicant did state that there had been an error in the zoning. And as staff went back and did the research on that, it, to us, it didn't appear that, that there actually had been an error. They're just, there was a different set of circumstances back in 2001 when it was in place.
You know, and if memory serves, in 2001, there was a lot of, there was still buzz about the Ash Creek Trail. And there might've been some consideration that this would be an important link in that Ash Creek Trail. And, and so that might've been a part of it. Then you made a comment, I was sort of going through some of my own notes, but, but because of the easement then, the remaining, whatever that is, like, you know, five acres or so that would remain public service, that can't, there can be any development on that at all, including any sort of park access or anything like that because of the easement. Is that what I heard you say?
Correct. There can't be any development within the conservation easement portion without approval from the North Coast Land Conservancy is who manages that, that easement. So there, there has been some discussions, I think that we may have mentioned about utility and, and potential pedestrian access. That's not part of this application, but, but that has to be approved. Yeah, but in general, if you read a copy of the conservation easement, it's very restrictive. I was surprised it even calls out no walking dogs in that area, I guess, to protect the wildlife. So yeah, it's, it's not intended for human development purposes, it appears.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Counselor McKeel?
Yeah, so this is my first land use thing, so here we go. Let me know if you, this just needs to be at a different kind of meeting. I, I noticed that this particular parcel looks like there are going to be some problems with the floodplain. Are, is, are there protections in place? So if homes are built in that area, future homeowners are warned that it's a floodplain? What process happens with that? I'm sorry that I don't know this.
Yeah, yep, no, that's a good question. So the, the city does participate. There's a national flood insurance program that FEMA administers so that people that own property in the floodplain can buy and be insured. And so as part of being in that program, we're required to have very specific floodplain regulations that govern any development in the hundred year floodplain and, and actually prohibit most development in the floodway, which is the area that carries water in the event of a, of a, of a hundred year flood event. So definitely any development will be regulated by that. The preliminary discussions with the development has indicated that they are mostly avoiding any development in the hundred year floodplain, which is good. But they, there is a small amount of, if there's any fill that is placed into fill material placed in the floodplain, it has to be approved through FEMA. So they're, they're initiated some steps through that. It's, it will be further reviewed by the city through the subdivision process. So more to come on that, but, but I just wanted to assure you that we do have flood regulations in place to, to protect the, the existing development and also any future development of that property.
And if I could just underscore that the imposition, the evaluation of those kind of development constraints and imposition of any regulations would occur at a development phase, not at this phase of a zone change and comprehensive plan amendment.
So I, I think my, thank you. I think my next question actually might go in along what, what you just said. Thank you, Mr. Lane. It's like there, on page 13 of the proposal, it said there was a small portion of the wetlands for you that would be for utility work. It said, no natural vegetation will be removed. And then it says, except it's just a little bit of land, but then it says for an extension of a street and stormwater outfalls, and it didn't sound like that's a little bit of work. So is this the stage that we bring up cautions about that? Or again, is that going to be at a different meeting?
Yeah, that will be at, at a future meeting that actually the, the planning commission reviews once we have a specific development plan in place to determine exactly what those impacts are and what approval is needed for them.
Okay. And I, and I'm pretty sure that the next one is, but I just Uh and I and I'm pretty sure that the next one is, but I just want to like, you know, because I don't know, I'm and I I apologize. Um I'm I'm concerned that we are careful with the kinds of homes that go into this and I'm probably this is in the subdivision phase because there's um as on page sixteen, I think it said where we need multiple kinds of houses. We need, you know, starter homes and and expensive houses. But that I so again, I'm sorry, this is that's for the subdivision phase of this or do we bring that up at this point as well?
Um so at this phase, we're really looking at is that um RS zoning, the is that an appropriate zone to place on it, the actual housing, the types of housing? Um and that would come later with the actual uh subdivision development. So you're not, I mean, the the zones will approve generally what types of housing are are allowed and then it's up for the development to propose the the specific, like within that zone, what's allowed. So so that zone will allow, for example, uh single-family development and then also with the passing of the House Bill two thousand one, I think it was um where single family is allowed. It also allows duplex development. So
Okay.
Yeah, and there's some.
I'm sorry. So RS would take care of that. So we're it's it's going to be right the right zone uh category is what you're saying? For for multiple, like the the duplexes, starter homes and single-family homes, RS is the right category?
It it will allow detached, single-family and also um duplex and and actually, yeah, if you go through planning and development, you can do some additional attached housing types as well, but uh, yeah.
Okay. All right, I I really appreciate your, like, I know we've gone over this once before, but it's like didn't stick. So thank you, Suzanne or Ms. Duffner. Thank you.
Definitely.
That concludes me.
Uh all right, uh Councilor Selena Soliveros and Councilor Lopez?
Yes, uh thank you. So um please correct me if I'm wrong. So the conservation easement serves as the buffer. So that means the developer has no obligation to provide any other open spaces. Is that correct?
Nope, actually, there will be, yeah, so the the buffer uh is is by, I guess, the property owner's design and that they placed that on there voluntarily. But it serves the same function of not being able to develop in there. So when the developer goes to get that future land use approval for for a subdivision, they um as part of it, so it's both the subdivision and the plan unit development, they'll they have to set aside a certain percentage of land for parks and open space. So there'll be additional land that they'll be required to set aside for that, but it'll be more for the recreation amenities um for to help serve the development. So thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh thank you very much, Ms. Duffner, for uh for for the incredibly detailed report here. Um I'm going to get into a little bit of the weeds and I'm gonna apologize in advance um uh because I I feel a little bit lost regarding the um the the zoning aspect and the demonstration of need there um as one of the criteria. When I when I look back at my notes from um our uh um urban growth boundary and housing needs analysis, I uh I I was looking back and seeing that at the time we were not able to um do an urban growth boundary expansion because that analysis indicated that we did have currently um enough available land to meet that uh meet that need. And then when I look in, but when I look in this report and some pages of that analysis are are quoted here, it it almost looks like it's taking that same data and trying to make the counterargument for it. So I I feel a little bit lost. At that point, we were told we couldn't do an urban growth boundary expansion because we had the um land available. Now we're saying, well, we need available land, so let's rezone this as one of the criteria for rezoning. So if you could walk me through that, I'd I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to clarify on that, uh Councilor Lopez. I think that's a really uh astute point and uh it it does, I can see where that would sound very confusing and I tried through the the at least the staff findings, uh because there's both the mix of staff and applicant findings in there to emphasize um that that uh need for the low-density residential comes about due to the amount of vacant lands that we have currently inside the city limits. So remember, there's those two boundaries that we kind of look at during the planning process, right? There's the there's the larger urban growth boundary where we have some of those uh holding lands that haven't been annexed. And when you look at our our numbers and our inventory with respect to that entire UGB, you're you're correct. We on paper, we have enough land. We can't justify that with uh DLCD to do a UGB expansion. However, there's the then there's today's reality, right, where hey, we're trying to to provide housing for a population and we are growing and people are wanting to live here and move here. Um and what's inside that boundary within the UGB, the city or city limits, that is much more constrained and um we, I think we figured we had about a a five-year land supply when this was done in two thousand nineteen for the low-density residential. So um we, as the city, can't go out and force a property owner to annex their land for development. So we're we're kind of in this weird waiting um pattern until that happens. And so I I know it sounds confusing, but tha- that's the distinction is that the the shorter term um supply is limited and this by rezoning some land within our city limits will help get at increasing that supply.
Okay, gotcha. And um my and I I may have misread. This is about uh so this land is currently within the city limits and would not need a um a uh to to be annexed into the city, correct?
That's correct.
Great. All right. Well, that uh that puts me at ease there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Councilor Selena Soliveros?
Yes, uh thank you. I and please let me know if if this is not where I asked the question, but um the traffic, we're looking at the map. So is is it mu- is the traffic going to come in and out of ninety-nine? Is that the connector? Or are there other streets that are connectors for that um development?
Yeah, so the there there is the more detailed uh access questions that will be answered when we get a specific subdivision. Uh we we know from our transportation system plan that there are um connections that are proposed um to serve this property and make sure that it's um connected to our existing street network and make sure that that the traffic volumes will flow uh most efficiently uh over the the planning horizon. So uh most notably, you know, that the transportation plan shows Craven Street um connecting through the property north and then also shows um uh two connections, I believe, to uh Highway ninety-nine W. But you're correct in that there those more specifics of where they land and and how the timing of those connected will will be determined um through the future development application.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh Councilor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh another another uh kind of in-the-weeds zoning um question. Um we've we've seen uh documentation and demonstrated uh need for um specific zoning types in the past. Specifically, I'm referring to that uh that um housing needs analysis and how it interacts with the with residential zoning. Um one thing that I I don't know that I've seen on my time in council is um any kind of needs analysis or any, you know, um established norm or benchmark for other types of land. Um is there are are there any guidelines to how much, what percentage of, you know, commercial or what percentage of you know, currently a public service lands fall within a city? I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, robbing Peter to to pay Paul here.
Yeah, no, that's 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 great. Thank you for making sure that's a comprehensive plan, right? To be looking at it comprehensively in different land uses. So great question. Uh and the the answer is we have not updated our uh economics uh land inventory, which would be those commercial, industrial, public lands. Uh as of yet, it's it's in the work plan and uh we're we're hoping to do that just as quick as as we can find the capacity to do it and the funding for that. So um I mean, we've we've started to look at it a little bit anecdotally, just with um staff and that we're not a huge city, so it's it's fairly easy to say, oh, the S-Curve's property just developed. So now we're we're getting a little short on commercial. Um public is an interesting uh designation to to plan and zone for in that um more recently, the state has developed a series of what they call safe harbors when cities are doing their their future land use plans and making sure that they have enough land in each of the zone designation. So so the the we get to make an assumption using one of those safe harbors that um a certain percentage, I think it's twenty-five percent of our residential development land need will come will be put to public use. So for parks, infrastructure, um etc. And and so we we it's not as common that we go out and we because we have to justify, well, what is that? You know, is it Western Oregon University College that's generating a lot larger um public land need for for some kind of specialty employment that exists that it doesn't exist in other areas. So um, you know, I think that the the public land need when they thought of this back in two thousand one uh is being addressed, you know, for the for the parks and for the the infrastructure through another avenue through our residential um uh land needs planning, if that makes sense.
If I could say that if this was a, if the property was zoned currently commercial and we were taking it out of the commercial land supply, um state law would require an analysis of our commercial lands to basically to uh to look at our commercial lands and the removal of this and analyze that in terms of the impact on employment lands. There's no similar requirement for rezoning of public uh zone lands. So uh that's not an element of this application, but it would be if it was if this was commercial and they're proposing to rezone it as residential.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I I just want to and I I greatly appreciate that uh that that clarity. Um uh I do have a question about ju- just to make sure that I understand correctly, um uh Ms. Duffner, that current that current uh residential zoning, um you said that, uh I I believe that you said that uh when developing that there are now safe harbor laws that um that uh, you know, allocate twenty-five percent, I believe, was the number of of that area to um public lands. Is that is that what I heard correctly? So if if this was rezoned to low-density residential, some of this would still be used as public land in some way?
Yeah, but it doesn't get applied. That that's a general planning tool metric that we use for how much to estimate how much land is needed. It's not on a per-development basis because frankly, if if a development can be done and it doesn't need as much uh public land set aside, then it's using the land more efficiently and providing more housing. Um so we don't want to discourage, you know, that necessarily in in some instances. So I'm throwing out a lot of numbers tonight and and I'm I hope it's not getting too confusing, but the the twenty-five percent that I've referred to most recently was um more for as a as a safe harbor planning tool. It's not necessarily applied on a per-specific property. There was a question earlier about what are they going to need to provide some parks and open space land and um I believe that one is also a twenty, twenty-five percent, just to confuse you even more about that. But um, yeah, so that but that's that's a that's per our code, right, that gets applied to that specific parcel of development. The the safe harbor is more during the general planning um review process, just to make sure we don't shortchange ourselves on how much residential land is needed.
So with within that, I I I appreciate that that clarity. I think I had misunderstood, but I I do think I have it straight now. Within uh within that consideration, so if we're within our own um uh our own code and uh and guidelines looking at, you know, well, what what percentage of uh of residential land we have, what percentage of public land and are they staying balanced, right? And it doesn't have to be within the same lot. Um and that's that's kind of currently where we're at, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So within within that, um since this is currently um you know, public uh, you know, public use land, has this land been kind of counted as a way to counteract um more densely building and populating other parts of town if we're looking at things holistically that way? Um so what I'm hearing is that it's not within the same parcel. So I guess I want to just make sure that, hey, we haven't said in the past, well, we can build a little bit more densely here and we can maybe uh not you know, build a park here because we have public use land over here, but now we're going to reallocate that public use land to to residential. I just like I said, want to make sure that we're being honest with ourselves there.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's that's a great question. Uh so no, I'm not aware of any place that we've we've counted that in order to build more densely, like to transfer density someplace else. Um and it also made me realize that some of our public land uh is actually zone low-density residential, like parks are allowed use in that zone as well. So um, yeah, but I mean, the short answer to your question is no, that I don't believe that there's there's any place that we have uh specifically set this aside to meet density in some other area.
Great. Thank thank you very much. I really appreciate uh your your detailed answers to my wonky questions.
Councilor McKeel and then Councilor Oberst?
And uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Ms. Duffner. Um I think I've lost track of now the public use of this area and whether or not we have to make sure that we uh don't lose control of the parks and the bike paths that we that it would be good to have those in that area. That we can make sure that that happens during the subdivision phase. And we don't have to worry about making sure that some of this public use um stays like that uh and not make it residential. Maybe that question, there wasn't even a question in there, so. But I I've lost track of this now. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just I guess just a clarifying point that through the residential subdivision process, when they come in for their land approvals, they will be reviewed for the the parks and open space requirement if they're going through what we call a plan unit development process and and they'll need to show that. And then beyond that, like we did for the Hoffman Estates, like it's reviewed in tandem with our Parks Master Plans and the Parks Master Plan has a a proposal for where the parks are intended to go and and where the trail is supposed to go. And and so, you know, we we are supposed to be getting out there and and purchasing, you know, those lands for where they've been identified over the twenty-year plan horizon to to place those.
And bike paths and things like that are part of another plan and.
Well, um the Parks Master Plan does address some, yeah, trails as well there.
All right, Councilor Oberst?
So how unusual is it to have a parcel that is own public service, but we don't own it and nor does any other governmental agency?
It's pretty unusual. I'm trying to think of another one that I knew of and and I mean, you might get a semi-public, you know, where it's a
So it's not erroneous.
But not a, it's very unusual to have a privately owned parcel.
Not erroneous in terms of it was going on purpose, but it's weird.
Yeah, yeah, so I said.
By all rights, a private property owner being confronted with a public um publicly zoned parcel is kind of odd. Um going to the TSP and do I recall correctly? Going to the TSP, and do I recall correctly that, and it's not part of this subdivision because this parcel in question doesn't go far enough north, but that the long-term plan for Craven is to go all the way to Hoffman Road.
That's correct.
So there, e- even if this end of Hoffman doesn't, you know, or of Craven rather, never connects, there will be another way out of this subdivision in the future theoretically.
Once the property's in between development.
One of the east-west connectors runs into the sewer lagoon, but the other one goes all the way to Hoffman Estates and makes a connection there theoretically.
There are two east-west collector streets that are proposed and yeah, there are some challenges, I guess. On how those were shown, well, and two creeks and wetlands and flooded.
Looked good on the map.
Yeah, right.
Also, was that topographical?
Yeah, right. Exactly.
So one of the things I saw in letters from folks at the Planning Commission was the notion that gee whiz, all these houses are going to be built and our systems are going to be overwhelmed. But am I correct in recalling that systems development charges that each new home will pay, in fact, are intended to defray the cost of the impact on our systems? And so, well, we'll have a long-term cost in terms of things like policing. The cost of supplying with water and taking water away and so on should at some level be picked up by SDCs.
Yeah, we call those the growth or impact.
Doesn't fall on all the citizens of Monmouth as is suggested in one of these.
Help upgrade the sewer and the water.
That's why SDCs came into being. And I, this is not a typical single-family proposal, but a planned unit development is, is like Edward's Edition, basically.
Right, right.
Do we have any rules about what kind of houses go in? I mean, you know, starter homes, single-family duplexes, cottage clusters? We don't have any rules about that.
Nope.
And so if these folks come in and say, we're going to build off big, single-family, we don't have any ability to say, oh, no, you're not, because we don't have a rule about that yet.
That's correct.
Local limitation on duplexes under House Bill 2001.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. You have to allow duplexes, but you don't have to.
Require.
Require them.
Oh, no.
You don't have to compel them. 2001 doesn't compel it, just compels you to allow.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And then I, I just wanted to, once again, and I think I know this well, but I just want to clarify. When we did our land use analysis, we have a 30-year supply of residential land inside the urban growth boundary. But unfortunately, the vast majority of that is somehow constrained, be it conservation easements or wetlands or property owners who have stated, not even over my dead body, is this ever going to be developed, et cetera? And what we really have to look at is how much land do we have inside the city limits? That is developable. And if this all comes in, and it is now annexed, but if this is all developed, we're, after that, we don't have a whole lot that looks like it's available to be purchased by a developer and, and turned into houses.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's the short, that's the short term.
So much of that is conjecture based on what we think we know about current property owners and their intentions. But best we know, we don't have but another two or three years' worth of buildable inside the city limits.
Takes to, I mean, this started in 2020 and almost 2022. It takes a little while to get property, yeah, to develop. So.
So we, we still have a 30-years of land inside the urban growth. We still only have a two or three-year supply inside the city limits.
Limits, right. Those two distinctions of those two lines.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor McKeel.
Well, this is just, it really doesn't have to do with this, but I just would like to register kind of a, a, a pretty big worry that I have now from what Counselor Ober says is that we don't have a policy about what kind of homes can go into a development.
All right. Thanks. So noted, Counselor McKeel. That's not pertinent into this hearing. So we will have.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I retract that. I will bring that into another part of the meeting. I, I do apologize for that.
No, much. We will have those discussions later. But at this point, being no further clarification about the staff report or findings, I will now move to the portion where I ask if there are applicants or others in favor of this proposed zone change and comprehensive plan map change. So if we've received any written testimony or if we have anyone to speak in favor, including the applicant and Phyllis or Suzanne, if you know of any. Yes, and I'm sorry I can't read your name, but.
Ryan O'Brien would like to speak for the applicant.
Our applicant. So state your name and address for the record, please.
Here you are.
Oh, it says you're unmuted, but we cannot hear. Huh.
Maybe Mr., maybe Mr. O'Brien can call in.
Yeah, I might have to do that as well, or we have some. And then mute. Hopefully the computer will pick it up as feedback.
We're celebrating the anniversary of incorporation in the city?
That's an excellent point. Thank you for noticing. Yes. Up the incorporation date.
141 years.
So the interesting twist, of course, is that Monmouth passed an ordinance before it was a city. First, the first ordinance was you can't buy alcohol here.
Oh, before incorporation.
And they, it was before they were even a city.
Yeah, yeah.
So they asked the legislature to become, sort of territorial legislature, to become a city so they could pass the ordinance.
Can you hear me now?
Oh.
Oh, perfectly. Well, you know, I don't know why I do these Zoom meetings and team meetings with everybody else. I've never had a problem, only have a problem in Monmouth. It happened at the planning commission. I mean, I don't know why. Should probably test it in the beginning of the hearing or something. There's something wrong with the, but I don't know. I'll just go on. My, I don't, I don't need to say very much because I think Suzanne pretty much covered it. I do want to say a couple of things, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Ryan.
Okay.
Your name and address for the record.
Okay. Name is Ryan O'Brien and the address is 1862 Northeast Estate Drive, Hillsborough, Oregon 97124. And I'm here representing Randy Myers, the developer of the project, of the property. We do have an application that has been submitted to the city. It's in, in review right now by staff. It's not ready for a hearing yet, but as soon it will be going to the planning commission. I wanted to mention something that's really important. I think the, the councilman is correct. There is only about a two or three-year supply of land. It's actually in the city limits. You have plenty of land outside the city limits, but not in the city limits. It can be developable. And I don't know if Suzanne, if you can put up that aerial photograph that I prepared, which is exhibit number five, when you get a chance, because I wanted to explain a little bit about the property. We, we are proposing bike paths completely around our subdivision. And we're also proposing a bike path through the conservation easement so we can connect with Gentle Woods Park. And that was something that was requested by ODOT because they want people from our subdivision to be able to get pedestrian access to, to the city and not have to go onto the highway. We have two access roads on the highway. One is, I got a full left turn lanes in all directions. And the other one is just a right in, right out, which is further to the south. We have Mark Batoric here as online right now. And if you have any traffic questions, he can answer, answer those. And so, and I wanted to mention another thing about the flood plain. The flood plain's elevation is about 178 feet. And based upon our, our future development plan, all the lots, the buildable portion of the lots where the houses are, is going to be about 186. So we're, we're going to be about eight feet above the 100-year flood plain. So I don't think you're going to see much of an issue as far as, you know, houses being flooded. It's not going to be much of a problem. There is a need for housing. I think when you get the, when Suzanne gets that aerial photograph, I wanted to explain why this property is very important. Because in order to develop our property north, we have to go through this property for utilities. And it makes it very difficult to develop it if we don't get, if this property isn't included in the subdivision. So I think that's about it. So I haven't seen that.
Yeah, sorry, Ryan. I didn't know you were going to reference that. No, I don't, I don't have it handy. Do you need it? I can, I'm still trying to.
It's not terribly important. It's just that it, it shows how much additional property to the north is available for development if we, this property is rezoned to low density residential. The other thing I think is really important, I think we kind of missed this a little bit. And that is when you rezon property, you have to look at compatibility with surrounding properties. If, if, if other types of uses or other types of zoning are proposed on the property. Because all the property to the north, all the property to the south, all the property to the west, it's all zoned for low, low density residential. So that, that designation is very compatible with the neighborhood. And there will be a 100-foot conservation easement from the Gentle Woods Park to the north. And that's primarily where, you know, some of the wetlands and the trees are. The portion that we're rezoning is 100% of a farm field. It's not, doesn't have any significant natural resources at all. They're all within the conservation easement. So I think that's about all I have. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. At this time, council questions for the applicant. Counselor Carey.
Regarding the traffic business, the, the, the traffic information that's provided is, that has to do with the 8.6 acre rezone only and is not related in any way to the, you know, the larger development that, that sounds like is on the board and will be coming forward later time. So we're only talking about the 8.6 right now. Is that correct?
Right. And the only requirement that we have is to basically identify what you could develop on the property as an outright permitted use compared to what we could develop as a residential subdivision. And actually, as public service, you can, you can put public buildings on there and it'd be three times the amount of traffic that the residential development would be. And Mark can explain that a little bit better. So basically there's, we're not increasing traffic. We're actually decreasing it, which is pretty hard to believe.
Yeah, sort of. I understand the requirement, but it doesn't, it doesn't really, you know, it's, and, and it, it sounds like it's been done properly. It doesn't meet the real test, unfortunately, but we can't do anything about that, I'm afraid. I mean, you do what you have to do.
Mark can explain that a little bit better if you want, because that's what the rules are for the transportation planning rule, if you want to hear it from Mark.
Someone have a question specifically about the traffic portion, then?
Well, I think it was answered and that, and that is that, that the traffic data that we're looking at here only relates to the 8.6 acres that we're dealing with, with this instant question, which I, I guess I assume, however, you know, as that 46 acres is developed to the north, there'll be a different traffic number, but it's not a big concern of mine. It's just, we just need to acknowledge.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Counselor McKeel.
Yeah, actually, I don't have a question, but I just would like to thank, I think it was Mr. O'Brien in the notes that said the trees won't be removed during the planning commission. So I just wanted to thank you for that because that's, it was nice to see that that concern was there in your plans and the bike path around the division. So thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of the application? All right. And Phyllis, I'll, I'll be sure, you be sure and interrupt me if I'm not paying attention to something you have for us. At this point then, I will ask if there are any neutral comments, any spoken or written testimony for those who might be neutral to the application? All right. Seeing none. Any who are opposed may now speak. If anyone who is opposed to this application, I would ask that you come on and state your name and address for the record. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Dan Farnworth. My address is 820 Olive Way in Monmouth, which is just south of tax lot 1206. And I'd like to make a couple of points here. First of all, yes, tax lot 1206 has been agricultural for a very long time, but it's also supported a lot of wildlife, animals and birds, migratory, permanent animals, ranging from deer to eagles to vultures and coyotes. And I would like to see that continue, frankly. And so I would oppose this zoning change. Failing that, I'd note that the annexation of the property to the north was okayed with tax lot 1206 being public service. But in this new proposal, over half of that tax lot is now wanted for development. And the remainder being flood plain and wetlands and conservation easement is land that can't be developed without difficulty even by the city, which was pointed out earlier. And so what I would like to see is the city of Monmouth negotiate with these developers if they have to, so that we can retain a significant portion of that developable land, say four or five acres as public service and turn that into a wildlife area. And that would be my proposal. And I, I hope you would consider it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnworth. Any questions of Mr. Farnworth? Counselor Lopez? Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much, Mr. Farnworth, for contributing your thoughts here. I believe my question is actually probably best directed to Ms. Duffner.
Welcome to those.
Counselor Lopez will have another opportunity to talk to staff. So this is specifically questions.
Okay. Even though it is pertinent to Mr. Farnworth's comment and any questions that might be posed of him?
No, you need to ask your questions of him at this point.
Okay. Mr. Farnworth, I guess my question is, you know, more about process as far as how one would go about, you know, looking at a change like that. Although if you're not aware of the process, I'm happy to reserve my question until later when I can ask it of Ms. Duffner.
I am not aware of the process particularly, but I think generally the council has the option to set the actual consideration and judgment of the change to a later date. And during that time, I would think that the city staff could negotiate with the developers to set aside a parcel of land larger than the easement and so on and come to some kind of an agreement as to how that might be developed or incorporated.
Thank you.
Yep. You'll have that chance to ask Suzanne that. Any other questions of Mr. Farnworth? All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and waiting and giving us this testimony. Are there any others on the call who are opposed to the application who would like to speak? All right. Seeing and hearing none. At this point, we will turn to our community development director for her summary of what we've heard or response to any of the public testimony that was given.
Yeah, I guess I didn't really prepare a formal summary. I can respond to Counselor Lopez's question about the process. We certainly can encourage and have those discussions with the developer to encourage them to set aside parkland in that particular area. But at the end of the day, we're only able to hold them to what our city codes require in order to approve their development. So just like there's criteria tonight for a comprehensive plan zone change, our code has criteria for subdivisions and developments. So, you know, couldn't guarantee that that would necessarily be a successful negotiation, but certainly the applicant is on the line here to hear that request. And something duly noted going forward as we review the application. So I was able to pull up that exhibit five that Ryan O'Brien had asked for earlier. So if you would still like to see that aerial photo, I think the applicant gets a chance to rebut anything as well during this period. So happy to have that available as well.
Let's do the rebuttal before we get to staff questions.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. At this opportunity for Mr. O'Brien, the applicant's representative, to rebut any of the testimony that was given?
Yeah, this is Ryan O'Brien again. And we have been, you know, dealing with the city for probably about a year and a half on this project. And we really haven't had any comments from the city staff that they want to purchase, does the city wanted to purchase the land for the park? So, you know, that's still open, but they'd have to purchase on that. What I wanted to show you on the aerial photograph is that's the lower part, that's the part that's being rezoned. As you can see, it outlined in red. And all the properties to the north is being developed. However, about half of that property to the north is actually in the 100-year flood plain. So you can see that it, you know, they, those two pieces of property are just joined together. They really need to, we need the southern portion in order to develop the northern portion for multiple reasons, for utility purposes, for grading purposes, and for feasibility. For our project is, the feasibility of our project, financial feasibility is based on building the entire site. If we take that much out of the property, I think it might make it more difficult to actually develop the site. It's because, you know, it's based on a scale, the size. The smaller you make it, sometimes the more expensive it is to develop. Because we have a lot of off-site improvements. So we really need all the property. So again, we're open if the city wants additional land. But all the land that's to the east of that red area, that can all be, eventually can be dedicated to the city. We don't know who's going to actually buy the property because Randy Myers, as we're actually proposing the primary plat, we're not going to build the houses. So we would sell the property to a home builder that would end up building the houses. So we'll just see how it goes. And if we hear from the city, we definitely consider everything. So that's all I have. Got any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, I did skip that. So now, I, so now we're actually at the opportunity for a summary or response to that, Suzanne.
Okay. I do not have any, sorry, my computer's about ready to die. That was a very good summary. But it just died. So, yeah, we're a lot of information tonight. And hopefully, I just wanted to direct you back to the criteria for making the decision. You know, again, that you're looking at, has there been some kind of change in conditions? Is there a public need for the proposed request zone? Is it consistent with our comprehensive plan? Are adequate public facilities and services available? And is the change consistent, compatible with surrounding uses? And is it consistent with the statewide planning goals? So do you have findings from both staff and the planning commission that affirm that those can be met? Planning commission has recommended approval. And I don't have any further comments at this point.
All right. Any further questions now of Suzanne? Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much for correcting my blunder earlier. I'll pose a question to Suzanne regarding the process at hand tonight. Am I correct that any of those kinds of negotiations or possible future considerations regarding the use of the adjacent tax lot or regarding public spaces, you know, within the easement, are not to be considerations taken into account when going through this process tonight? Is that correct? Am I correct in my understanding there?
Yeah. The consideration tonight is whether or not the low density residential designation is appropriate, given the findings. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback on my end of things.
I think that might be because of Randy's.
We can mute something there.
Mute Mike being on there.
Yeah. So any future city public land acquisition would be handled as a separate aside. And then which specific lands get designated for recreation and open space use is also part of the future subdivision and PUD application consideration. So, yeah. We just have to balance kind of any acquisition with, you know, the amount of funds available and what our parks master plan says. So that just like we're looking at the comprehensive plan tonight and the city planning and zoning goals, there's a whole nother, you know, set of considerations for that parks and open space, per parks master plan that we have to consider, I think, as well.
If I can, just to underscore, your job tonight is to determine whether or not the applicant has met the criteria in the, in the staff report, set out in the staff report to establish the basis for a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. If you find that they've met the criteria, then they get to go through the door. If you find that they have not met the criteria, then you have the option to, you have the ability to say no. But it really is a criteria-based decision. And the criteria are the criteria that are set out in the, in the staff report.
Counselor McKeel?
Thank you, Ms. Duffner and Mr. Shutterly. With that, is it inappropriate to do a motion at this point?
At this moment, we have to, we're still in the hearing part. So let's finish with the formalities of that. If there are no further questions from the council, Counselor Oberst?
I'm good.
Thank you. There being no further testimony before the council tonight, I now close the hearing. Pursuant to ORS 197.7636E, the applicant has the right to submit final written argument that will be included in the record. This submission must be made within seven days and may not contain new evidence. The submission must only contain written argument. If the submission contains any new evidence, the new evidence will be rejected and council will only consider the written argument. The applicant also has the right to waive the submission of a final written argument. If the applicant does not waive the submission of final written argument, the council will not be able to make a final determination on the application tonight. Does the applicant wish to waive the submission of a final written argument?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you. The applicant waives his right to submit final written argument. So the council may now discuss and deliberate on this matter. So thank you. So at this point now, we will, any further discussion by the council? And if not, we can entertain a motion as in proposed in our staff report. Counselor McKeel?
I move to approve comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change 21-01 as recommended by the planning commission and as presented in the staff report, including the findings of fact.
Welcome.
Great. It is moved by Counselor McKeel and seconded by Counselor Oberst to approve this amendment and zone change, including all of the findings of fact. And we will have a roll call. Please, Phyllis. Now, I'm sorry. One more thing I want to check. It says in my notes that we might also have to include, approve any conditions of.
Not any conditions of approval.
And I just want to verify, there are no conditions of approval. So this is merely the decision and the findings.
Up or down?
Yep. Okay. Thank you. So, Phyllis? And Lane, does this require a roll call?
It does not require a roll call. You'll get a chance to vote on the ordinance. But, you know, it also is not wrong to do a roll call. So if you want a certitude as to the record of the votes, that's fine with me.
Okay. Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye, but I'm, there was no discussion on the motion. But nonetheless, I'm an aye.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Oberst?
Aye.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 6-0. All right. Thank you very much. The decision is announced as we have approved this comprehensive map and zone change 21-01. And that will be confirmed in writing via a notice of determination by our staff.
Actually, we'll return with a formal ordinance. We have a first and second reading.
Right, with an ordinance. All right. Thank you all very much for that. We have a couple more pieces of business. It has been a little bit without a break. So if it's okay, I would like to propose, I've got 8:17. So if we can take about an eight-minute break, seven, eight-minute break and return at 8:25 to take care of our last pieces of business, All right.
That's right. Absolutely. Exactly the same way. It would be a bad thing if we had nothing to do. So, list your good.
Yeah.
But you gotta keep moving.
Get myself one.
All the gangs off here, almost.
No. Yep. Yeah.
Speak of the devil.
There we are. All right. Thank you very much for entertaining that break, and we will now move to an item to consider adoption of certifying officer resolution. A bit of tidying up, I believe, of an action we took recently.
Yes, great. Thank you. Yep, I was trying to get loaded back up on how I have battery power again. Okay, yeah, so this is just really tidying up of our request to submit Community Development Block grant with the Polk Community Development Corporation. If you'll recall, staff came to the council last summer in July, I believe it was, to hold a public hearing to consider applying for these funds. And again, this is a reminder, these are housing rehabilitation program funds that will help homeowners that qualify, so low to moderate income households, complete much-needed repairs to their homes. So we, each city kind of takes a turn in Polk County to apply for these. It's, it's Monmouth's turn in the rotation. We've got all of the application materials that have been put together, and one of the things that they had called for is an actual resolution certifying an officer to act on behalf of the city for the grant. So you'd already kind of took this action, we just didn't have it done in a form of a resolution. So a little bit of paperwork catching up here. So that's the purpose of this resolution, to designate Marty Wine at the city manager as the acting grant certifying officer that will help with any of the grant administrative paperwork. So happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
I don't have any questions. I'm ready to make a motion if everyone's ready for a motion. Yes, okay. I move to adopt Resolution 1932, Designating the City Manager to Act as the Grant Certifying Officer.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Salinas Oliveros and Counselor McKeel. Are there, is there any discussion? All in favor? We will have a roll call, for sure, on this one. Come on, yes, we will. Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Aye.
Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. We will now conduct a public hearing and entertain another resolution. This is a much less formal hearing process, because it is not in our quasi-judicial role. So at this point, I will enter our staff report from Marty Wine.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, tonight we're requesting that you have a, a public hearing and approve a resolution that's related to procuring our general contractor services for our city hall replacement project. Under our local and our state purchasing rules, the council can make findings to allow certain public contracts to be exempted from competitive bidding. So if the council approves this action tonight, we would pursue a process to bring on our general contractor for city hall in two parts. First, it would be a request for qualifications and then a request for proposals process. Our architect and our construction manager recommend and have worked with this process, which in the first step, a request for qualifications, identifies the well-qualified firms to do the work based on criteria that's specific to our project. And then as a second step, invites those qualified bidders to submit proposals to be our general contractor. So the findings to exempt, exempt the contract from local purchasing rules needs to show that awarding the contract in this way doesn't encourage favoritism or diminish competition and that cost savings or benefits in the project would be achieved. So what you have before you attached to the resolution are findings that state these conditions for our city hall project and the reasons that we believe that this method, this approach to contracting in two parts, RFQ and then RFP process is the preferred one. The project will still be competitively bid by the general contractor firm. And, and it will also be competitively bid to secure subcontractors, and we believe that this, this process and this approach will serve the project best to identify the, as I said earlier, the, the well-qualified contractors who have experience with the projects such as ours, folks who build city halls and, and ones who can help us build the project in a way that manages costs. We, we noticed this exemption to the contractor or the competitive bidding process, and we received one request for the findings, but no other inquiries. And as, as noted in the staff, this, the staff report, if you want me to walk through the findings, I can certainly do that, but there is a draft motion in the staff report, and we recommend approval of the resolution to exempt the project from competitive bidding. And I'd invite any questions that you have.
All right. Any questions before we open the hearing to public testimony? All right. Seeing none, I will ask if there are any comments in favor or against our, this request to change our, this exemption from our procurement rules. There is no one in the room for public testimony. Phyllis, was any testimony submitted on this? Or is there anyone online identified as wishing to speak on this matter? There was nothing submitted and there's no one online. All right. And I'll close the hearing.
Yeah.
And then there are some alternative actions listed in the staff report. And a proposed motion if one chooses to go forward with this. Counselor Oberst?
I move to approve Resolution 1933 authorizing the exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorizing direct negotiations for a contract for city hall replacement general contractor services.
I second.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel, for the second. Any discussion? Counselor Carey?
Probably a question for, for Marty on this. You know, the, the, I'm a little unclear about what all of the downsides of the competitive bid process would be. I've read, I read the staff report, I, I, you know, I see that, those are sort of generalizations. You know, I, I, I'm interested in something that we can move efficiently, quickly, and without a lot of BS, but you know, what are the real downsides to a competitive bid process?
I think, I think the primary focus of an invitation to bid is really a focus on cost. And I think by, by having that being the primary focus, instead of focusing first on qualifications, it's possible that we might, we might end up with a bidder that is not as well-qualified or not as well-acquainted with our project, or not as well-able to manage the project in a way that not just controls cost, but does the project efficiently. And so doing the upfront review of qualifications, we believe, and in the experience of our architect and of our construction manager, we're building some efficiency into the process upfront by, by pre-qualifying bidders who are well-able to carry off our project. I maybe I answered your question in the opposite way, but we, if we go through an invitation to bid process, we would be focusing primarily on the cost.
And if I, if I may, you know, we are, we contracted with Western Oregon University for the construction management services. This is the process that Western Oregon University uses for its capital projects on campus. So it is the process that our construction manager is most familiar with, and I think that is a strong signal in support of this, using a method that our construction manager is familiar with and knows how to best manage, and the architects were in concurrence as well.
You know, sometimes you get, you, you, you're limited, and that's what I'm really wondering about. What are the, I mean, if we go to the competitive bid process, which I generally support conceptually, but if we get a low-ball bid with an unqualified, what seems to be an unqualified person, given, if we were to go to the competitive bidding process, would be, would we be required to take that low bid?
The standard for the competitive bid is the lowest responsible bidder. And so there is a qualitative analysis. I think the construction manager and architect both thought that this RFQ/RFP process, it really enhances the ability to identify the qualified bidders and just deal with them.
I think that one other downside that has been identified with the low bid process is that by going with a, with the lowest bidder, oftentimes there are more changes in, in the field, in, you know, during construction that lead to cost increases that we could run into. And I think we're, that this is also an effort to try to avoid that.
Counselor Oberst?
So I think what I'm hearing you say is, and John, you kind of hit it, this is that if you do the competitive bid, you might get stuck with somebody who is in over their head at some level. Even though you do your very best to vet them, you might, you, because you don't get to do as deep a look upfront. And so having an opportunity to do a deep look, and on this particular project, I mean, if you're talking about, we need to resurface thirty miles of highway, that's a fairly straightforward thing, and, and the, the, the equipment and skills are well-known and you know, it's not, the folks who do that know, you know, have a track record of what they're doing. And so you do competitive bidding, you pick the cheapest person, the people who think they can do it for the least amount of money. This seems like a complex enough project that I want to know upfront that I've got somebody who is, you know, well-versed in a project of this complexity. And frankly, we know what it's, should cost. We're, we're not trying to scrape away and, and save every dollar. We want to do it as cheaply as possible, but our fight is going to be to keep it below the price tag, not to try to go lower than that. So, you know, I'm in favor of, let's take the, the opportunity with your proposal to really vet the, the bidders upfront and have a look and see who's the most qualified to do this thing. And then, heck, once we know, we know that, get, get some estimates in and go.
Yes, that's, that's an accurate summary of the reason for going this, this way. And I, I would say too, to the point about the time, the time that it would take to go through what I'm describing as a two-step process, we're still wanting to get our general contractor aboard as soon as possible and get going on construction. And so we're, and I would say too, on the qualifications front, we're looking for, we're going to be looking for a general contractor who's well-versed in public sector, you know, construction of city halls and municipal projects, who knows the elements of our building, things like cross-laminated timber, which are part of the structural elements. So there are going to, there are going to be some criteria that are, that will help us to find the folks who are best qualified to be able to carry this off.
Let alone the tearing down part.
That too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Not, not, everybody gets to tear down.
Is, is mayor gonna drive a bulldozer to a tear down?
I don't know. I don't think it'll take a bulldozer. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Phyllis, a roll call please to adopt Resolution Number 1933. Counselor Oberst?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to our reports. Mine is brief. I will, I will reserve time in future meetings for a more thorough mayor's report. And turn this over to reports of council representative of boards and commissions for brief reports there. Before we do that, we did have a couple of applications that were sent to us, and I did want to recognize that we have not that, we have an applicant for the Traffic Safety Commission. Sean Robbins had that as his first and only choice this evening, and looks like he is interested and qualified. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Sean Robbins.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Oberst and Counselor McKeel. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you. And we'll get that, that a little more full. We also had an application for Arts and Culture Commission. Melody Barrett, who is confirmed. Melody Barrett, who is confirmed as being a resident of Monmouth, indicated interest in arts and culture. A very interesting perspective on that has gotten involved because of participating in events over the spring and summer and wants to serve. So I would also entertain a motion to appoint Melody Barrett to Arts and Culture.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez, and thank you, Counselor Belts. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you, Phyllis. If you'll get those out, we can welcome those new members and new perspectives, and we appreciate that. All right, Counselor Oberst, you had a brief.
It's so brief. Parks last Wednesday. We took a nice, long walk through Monmouth Recreational Park and looked at current conditions and talked about future plans, the most exciting of which is in what's now a kind of a floody wetlands area, eventually a boardwalk and a gazebo for observing the wildlife that gathers around the lagoons down there. And that's on the, the development plan for 2024 or '25? I can't remember which one. There's, that park has, has a number of improvements coming up in a few years.
Great.
So it's a good, good meeting and led directly to tonight's report.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes, very quickly, Historic Commission met last week, last Wednesday. And we, we went really quickly. We talked about our council presentation coming up November 2nd. Please all be there. We also spoke about an update of our mural, waiting for confirmation for that. We talked about our Columbus Day Storm interpretive display, and we looked at some really great pictures. And then we're talking about how to unveil that and, and different perspectives to add. And then we, we had some announcements, Hispanic Heritage Month, and the National Register Nomination Meeting, which is October 21st at 2:30. If you're interested, please contact Ms. Dufner. And our next meeting will be here, I believe, for council.
Great. Not here in your home, here at the November 2nd council meeting. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Belts.
I attended the library board meeting on the 13th, and I actually had to leave early because I was hosting greeters that morning. But we did talk about, I did do the report from council. And the only other issue that may be of interest is that the Friends of the Library have purchased a building to store extra books in because they have so many wonderful donated books for their sales. That building, let's see, they have gravel on the property. They have, the building was delivered, and that is on the library property. And so Krist has been working on a letter of agreement to make sure that everybody knows whose responsibility is what, to maintain that building. And, and so hopefully soon they'll be having another book sale and have plenty of books to sell.
Great. Thank you. Any other reports at this time? All right. That leaves us with our city manager's report.
Thank you. Council, I had, I had planned for tonight that we would have a report about the City Hall project and the various elements of what's going to be happening with that project. But I realized that part of the limiting factor on bringing a full report to you was that we were getting a cost estimate for the current phase that we're in for construction documents phase from our architect. And we're, we have a preliminary report from them. And I think what I'll do is save, save my report about City Hall until our next meeting so that we can give you that update. And with your action tonight on the procurement process, we'll be opening an RFP potentially next week. So we'll, we'll get that process going right away and as soon as we can get our.
RFQ.
Sorry, RFQs first and then RFP. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so I'll hold on some of the elements of City Hall report until our next meeting. Let's see. And then the only other thing that I would add for city manager's report is just to let you know that we've, I've opened the recruitment for, a search for our police chief. Last week, we, I, I put the advertisement out in the law enforcement community for the recruitment. And I, following the longtime police chief retirement in the spring, we've, you know, we've had Lieutenant Haynes serving as our interim police chief since then. And, and he's done a very good job throughout 2021. But what we're going to do is we're opening it as an internal and external recruitment. And just wanted the council to know, and then that I'm going to be creating both social media and in-person chances to do listening sessions with members of our community to get their input about the characteristics that they would find important in our next police leadership. At the moment, I'm just asking folks to contact me, but I'm going to start, I'll start creating venues where people can give input. And I'm, I'm expecting for that recruitment to, for us to be able to review applicants in mid-November. So it's going to be about a month where we'll gather input and then hear from people who are interested in serving in that role. And I think our original goal was to have a, our, have our chief aboard, our, our permanent chief aboard by end of year. And I think we're on track to do that. So more to come. You'll see an invitation from me to all of you to eat, to either participate in those listening sessions or in the interview process when it comes time to interview applicants. That's all I've got for tonight.
Great. Thank you. And if we do attend those listening sessions, I think they are noticed then as public meetings at that point because we are there or not.
If, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't envision that we'd be inviting more than, more a quorum.
Okay. So we would not all be attending the same ones. And Counselor McKeel, you had a question there or comment?
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Wine. Did you want people in the community to start contacting you? Are you going to announce the sessions and then you want us to let people know?
Yes, both, please.
Okay.
Thanks. You'll see in the upcoming community notes that my contact information is included there. And I, I announced it last month as well, but it's perfectly great, fine, to have people either call or email me and have a conversation. Thank you.
Yep, that'll also help her develop a list of folks to invite to these public forums. All right. Any other questions of Marty? At this time, are there any council comments or announcements to make? All right. Seeing none, I will, Counselor McKeel.
So, so I just want to bring back the, my statement that was made in the wrong meeting about talking about policy of developers, building. We can't ask developers to build starter homes that they're, can kind of put what they want up. And I don't know how to put that on the radar, so we can get that on an agenda to talk about that. I think we're, I, I did some looking and if, if I, I found that the married homeowner rate in the United States is 80%. And the married people who are homeowners in Monmouth is 63%, according to that document. So I think, I think we have some work to do on providing homes for people in this, to get them into the housing market. Into a home, sorry.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how many, what the percentage of rentals owner occupied, right? Because we assume a lot of folks who are homeowners potentially in our community could be actually press or, you know, LLCs or people who own rentals. So, all right. Suzanne Dufner was in the back taking notes. You can't see her, but she, she did note that. Other council comments or announcements? Then a motion to adjourn our regular council meeting, and then we will reconvene the Urban Renewal Agency.
So moved.
So moved. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Now I would like to invite the members of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency to take their places. And I will call to order the Tuesday, October 19th meeting of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency and ask for a roll call of the members, please. Phyllis.
Ms. Belts.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. McKeel.
Here.
Mr. Oberst.
Here.
Ms. Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Ms. Coons.
I am here, and we have a moment reserved for citizen comments. There is no one in the room with us. Do we have any comments that were sent in? Or are anyone on the call, Phyllis, for the Urban Renewal Agency?
They do not. None were sent in and no one's on the call.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of the Urban Renewal Agency. It's last meeting of August 17th. I do not believe Mr. Oberst found any.
Oh, I don't know. Give me a minute.
With those. So unless there are any other corrections or additions, a motion to approve the consent calendar is presented.
I move approval.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Carey, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas Oliveros. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Thank you. That, the minutes are approved. We have one item on our business agenda this evening, and that is our capital improvement plan, project status. So catching up on things that the Urban Renewal Agency can do with its funding, which are completely separate from the general fund that the council oversees or any of the other funds the council oversees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, thank you, and board members tonight. We have, we provided you with a status report of the projects, an update of the, of our progress that the Urban Renewal Agency's been contributing to. This is not an item that we're hoping to get any action from you on. We just want to periodically let you know what's happening with the projects that the agency is contributing to. So the report that we gave you lists the, and describes the projects, the amount the agency is going to contribute and the current status. I wasn't planning to read through the list tonight except to offer to answer any questions that you might have. We have the department directors who are seeing these projects with us tonight, who can also assist in talking about either what's going on with the finances of the, of the agency or any of the project status. I'd also say we have not forgotten that back in August, you, you had a briefing about the process for substantial amendment to the Urban Renewal Agency Plan. And we're anticipating being able to bring you a proposal and recommendation probably early in 2022 with alternatives. At the time, we talked about, should we extend the life of the district, amend the boundaries? Should we add or remove projects or change our maximum indebtedness? Any of those changes would require a substantial amendment, and we'd need to confer with, with our, our neighboring jurisdictions for those affected by the plan. So just wanted you to know, we haven't forgotten about that discussion, and we're reviewing what those alternatives might look like. But for now, we wanted to bring you a status report about what, how, how the projects that we are working on are going. So I would take any questions that you have.
Yeah. And again, these are projects that we updated probably just prior to Marty arriving was the last time we did a major overhaul of this plan and took a look at it. And do definitely have some of the projects in line, working on them. Others potential are proposed, and some of them funded, not, not all of them funded. So that, but it's a great opportunity to stop and review and make sure we understand what the Urban Renewal Agency is going to be asked to do in the future in the amount of time we have left before 2025. And we can't do anything else unless we make those plan amendments. Questions? Counselor, Mr. Carey? Dr. Carey?
Thank you, Madam, or Chair Coons. Just a couple of things. One, and I, and I looked through this, albeit briefly. You know, we've got some, we've had some discussion regarding that whole, I, or the 99 corridor study, the whole interface with Madrona down there. And Mr. Oberst enticingly reminded us all that Russ Cooper's got some excellent ideas about developing a different crossing down there. And, and I couldn't find whether any of that was in there or not. So that's one. Two, looking really forward to the Highway 51 pedestrian improvements. For those that have been around a while, you know, we went to the mat with ODOT and finally decided we didn't want to deal with them on some of those improvements and those S-curve down there. S-curve to Hepley. And this looks like really a good one. And then finally, generally, are we looking at the potential for development that we talked about this evening out, you know, north of town? Or any, do we have much here? It looks to me like Power and Light's got something embedded in there, but just, are we anticipating that movement? Because a portion, at least leading up to that, is in the district, I believe. So kind of a convoluted series of three questions.
Why don't we start with the 99W study? I see Mr. Cooper has turned on his camera.
Yeah. So the Urban Renewal Agency initially participated in funding the study itself. The improvements aren't shown in this CIP. They certainly could be considered as, as amendments to the CIP, and the Urban Renewal Agency could participate in funding those. The Madrona intersection is currently budgeted in the Transportation SDC fund. So if, if the agency wanted to offset some of that cost, they certainly could. Or if the improvements were greater than what's budgeted, maybe the agency could participate in covering additional costs. And, and I think that's consistent with the improvements that fall along Highway 99. They could be, the agency certainly could participate in funding those.
And then Board Member Carey, your question about the, the potential development of Ash Creek PUD. I'm going to look at Suzanne Dufner and just make sure she will nod and tell me that I'm saying the right thing. So I don't want her to run across the room. But I, you, you're correct that the, that part of that potential development is in the Urban Renewal District, but not all. The northern, it, I think it's the northern, some of the northern development.
That slot 1206 that we had talked about.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that, that would be nice if we could, you know, some of that, you know, some reference to trails and so forth, if we could utilize some of that. I really do believe there's potential for that Ash Creek, Ash Creek, a gentle woods area, of course, a loop trail if not a, a through trail. But that, that may not quite fit anyway.
The CIP that you see on the report for, envisions the agency contributing to a future Ash Creek Trail. And if it were to become part of that development, then the agency would be contributing to that, yes.
The, the future Ash Creek Trail, the, the long past Ash Creek Trail. The, the half a road to nowhere. There were two parts of other roads to nowhere, which was a lovely plan 20 years ago, which we'll see. Other questions or observations? This really does have some great notes about project status indicating that there are things that are planned for the next couple of years. So please note those. And, ooh, there's a complete, look at that. Love that. Good job. Line extension overhead to underground conversions? Any other questions or comments? Counselor McKeel. On this, Ms., Dr. McKeel.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I actually have a kind of a worry with the, on page eight, with the Highway 51 pedestrian improvements and the Hoffman Road bicycle pedestrian improvements, that in both of those cases, there has been a fatality. But we're not beginning those projects until much later. I, I would hate to see another fatality in the meantime. Is there any way that we can move those projects up to get them done sooner? The, the reason I joined the bike committee, bike ped committee, because I, of the things that I saw with people walking in the streets and kids walking in the streets, so. So I'd hate to see another fatality because we didn't get that project going faster. But maybe there's some other reason.
Yeah, Russ, if you want to address that?
Was that for me to address? Sorry.
Yes, sir. Please.
So what I can say about the, the transportation projects and their, their actual scheduling is that, is that the city or, or council had asked me to go through a, a, an outreach process where we reached out to citizens, developed a project list. And then through that same process, we prioritized those projects. And then we, we fitted in based on what staff had the capacity to, to carry out and what budget we had to carry out those projects. So it was kind of a, a, it was a relatively long project, process that came up with a seven-year CIP. And, and that this, you know, the timing of, of those projects are reflected in the CIP. So to, to move them up, certainly council could, or the Budget Committee or City Manager could ask to rearrange those, those projects. But that's how they landed in the various CIPs the way they did.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, you know, a couple of notes about that. One is obviously Highway ninety-nine has been a huge priority, and we are working on that. So that one was, had risen to the top. Another thing to note, for example, on the Hoffman Road, multiple jurisdictions. So we don't get to say, let's pick Hoffman, because it's City of Independence, Polk County. And you'll also note on that project, there's an estimated $2.6 million project of which the Urban Renewal Agency would contribute a couple hundred thousand to do some project planning. So it, we wanted to do some, not, not exactly low-hanging fruit, but I think where some of that's prioritized is in projects that we know we can accomplish without relying on all those partners. And Highway fifty-one is just as much of a problem as Highway ninety-nine when it comes to the partner. So that's another issue I think we all face.
We have a eight-hundred-pound gorilla of a partner in ODOT. They, they call their shot.
Yeah, because I was walking on Highway fifty-one at night, and I was like, it was, it's kind of a scary place to walk if you're going east. There's, there's really no place to walk. You have to cross the street to be safe.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Yeah. And Counselor McKeel, fifteen, twelve years ago, we had a grant approved by ODOT to do improvements from the S-curve up to the top of the hill. And when ODOT stopped and looked at property acquisitions and everything else, they were going to have to do a million-dollar project turned into a $6 million project. And they weren't going to pay any more than the one million they'd already committed. And so that consequently, that project died. Now, that was going to be center-left turn lane, curbs, gutter, sidewalks, green, uh, what's that? Bike lanes, real bike lanes, uh, green strips between the sidewalk and the curb. It was going to be a major project, and it just, it wound up costing too much. I'm trying to work a project on Hoffman, and I'll, I'll just, you know, put myself in Rush's shoes right now. I'm having to work with the county to put bicycle pedestrians along that road is not going to be easy. The stretch to the west of ninety-nine was fairly straightforward to put a wide shoulder on the south side. The portion to the east of ninety-nine, however, there's drop-offs and stormwater ditches. There's going to have to be property acquisition done along there to put any kind of bike ped path along that, that road, I'm afraid. And I would love to see it done yesterday as well. That's a bigger project than it may seem on paper.
Well, it, it's like, I think beautifying fifty-one would be great, but having a sidewalk is like a critical need. So I just, anyway, I know I keep talking about that, though.
Yeah. It's, it's, all of those issues weren't beautification. They were safety-related. The green strip and everything else is all part of traffic calming and pedestrian separation. It was a, it would have been a great project until ODOT decided it cost more and we didn't have the money. Uh, great. Other questions or? That is our only item this evening. So at this point, unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is it okay if I make that motion again?
Yes.
So moved.
And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time this evening in a little past nine. But lots of good, important education work and public good. So thank you and good night.
Good to see you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good to see you. Good night.
Zoom wave.